We, I was called to hold the special meeting in conversations with school committee members and select board member. The idea was for us to look at our budget. This is coming off the select board meeting on Monday night. For us to look at our budget and if we can possibly reduce our budget by a hundred thousand, they may be able to put the, get the budget through without doing an override. And the concern obviously being the, whether or not the override would go through. Were it happening last year, what's the appetite, that kind of thing, and they might also be in a spot to do it. That's my general, some of you were there that night, you probably have a little bit more, more color to that, that comment, but that was what it was. So we had a forty hour notice, so people were wondering why we're having meetings at the exact same time as the select board. I was told at the select board meeting on Friday, we met within forty hour notice. I had a meeting prior to this for negotiations, so we got, we're stuck here at seven. So that's why, for those of you wondering what's going on with the two government bodies not really fully seamlessly working together on that side. But we've had conversations with them during the week, at least I have. I've spoken with Scott and kind of got the general overview of what they were doing.
I'm standing.
Oh, sorry. Over at select board.
Well, that's what I said, that you're over there, that's probably a good thing.
Did they start at six thirty?
Uh, yes. I thought it was going to be six, it went up to be six thirty.
Excellent. So, I was just summarizing, Doug.
Okay.
Welcome. I was just summarizing that we had heard to, that possibly if we can reduce our budget by a hundred thousand dollars, that the select board may have a way to get this budget through without having to do an override. Is that, as you left that meeting, is that still where they're kind of at?
They didn't state it in that way. What they're doing tonight over there is looking at the other, the rest of the town budget, other departments. Did mention, you know, requests to administration. And, but they didn't characterize it the way you just characterized it in terms of, I mean, they, they're not planning, they said, uh, they're not planning, you know, in the meeting, they said they weren't planning to vote on whether to have an override or not.
Okay.
Tonight.
That's fair enough, because they don't know what we're doing, I guess, but they need to let the town know by Monday, right?
So they're gonna have, they plan at their Monday meeting to make that determination.
Okay.
So.
So, that puts us in a unique situation because the original budget that we put together was to solve the financial problem of the school and its reliance on school choice as a revenue source. It's been, not been stable the last, especially in the last year and years moving forward. In order for us to reduce the budget, as we've kind of come, we've, Ben and I have met, obviously, when we heard this, we've kind of did some, some head scratching, is that we had built a budget with a, a little bit more in the override so that we took all staffing, teacher staffing off of school choice. There were still some IAs on school choice, but those are kind of, are smaller numbers and easier to move. And that gave us with a surplus in school choice so that we had some flexibility if there's any movement in that number next year. For those watching, numbers of school choice depend on your enrollment, and enrollment can change from year to year. It can go up, it can go down, spend increments can go up, they can go down. And so you really, a population the size of Sunderland, at a minimum, you're talking fifty thousand dollars you want to have as a buffer. I would say probably even a little bit more, because that number was actually given to Whately as their minimum. But, when you're in tough times, I understand that number. So, I guess my only concern is if we lower this, and they go for an override, that override's not going to fix. The idea is that we are going forward, like, if we're gonna ask the town for money, we are going to fix the financial problem of the school. And so, I hand it back to you, Mr. Jarvin. So we have, what do we have, ninety thousand cuts that Ben and I left our meeting with. Was it this morning, was it yesterday? Yesterday.
Yesterday.
And we were talking about what are we gonna do about the last ten, because the last ten starting to get really tight as it goes into programs. But, and I'm not sure if that's in the, is that what we, you're providing?
Yes.
Okay. So, we can talk about what that looks like, or do you want to talk more about, I kind of took over, I jumped right in, but I was trying to.
I'm gonna take it. Yeah, if you want to get really Robert's rules about it, we should have a motion before we discuss, but, you know. We're in a tough spot. We don't know, there are no good options on the table. We know that if we go along with the suggestion to cut out a hundred K, that it's, we've already frozen things to get where we are. So now you're really, you're in permafrost here, and, and you can't do this year to year. At the same time, I get the idea that we can propose what we like, but even if it gets to an override, there's a ballot, and the voters get to decide whether they approve it or not. I think I do want to discuss, you know, just among us, what we think is the right thing to do, but also in terms of the downside if we, if we put off an override for a year, what is that bias? That is just some goodwill and some fatigue potentially from the ballot box. I mean, and what does it cost us? Ben, you said you, you worked with Darius to figure out what that would even look like. And you're still, you're reaching for another ten K. What is that?
At, at this point, it would be staffing.
Staffing. Okay.
Well, the computers, the computers first, so. The computers are the easiest, easiest thing going back and forth, those darn computers are being wheeled around.
Are you talking about the, the ninety thousand that we?
Exactly.
Yeah, so, um, that was, um, taking forty thousand of the school choice and putting it back on school, on choice. Uh, technology was twenty thousand, so now we're at sixty. A fourth instructional assistant, approximately twenty-three thousand, so we're at eighty-three. And then through circuit breaker, so we're at ninety-three.
Yeah, so you've gone from three fifty-four to, you've got the right number over. So you've gone from a difference of three fifty-four to one fourteen to now two sixty-four fifty-six.
And so to clarify, because more people are watching than ever, I hope, that's, we talked about, there's two numbers in there that may be confusing. As one is the school choice number was part of the override, was that we shifted all monies, we shifted all staff positions off school choice to give us a buffer so that we would not have to go next year to an override if we continue to have a fluctuation in school choice. That we would have a small buffer there, which you really should have, is almost, healthy spending is full school choice. And it is, it is a year in a rear, you're spending all the money you get from school choice a year later, but we would have a smaller. So what we're doing, instead of all fifty thousand, we could move all fifty thousand, but we, we should have at least ten thousand dollars for one or two kids moving. Let's play a little bit of a, a thing there, so we're doing forty thousand of that back to the, off to the local, back on. So that's that one. And the other one, he said, circuit breaker. Basically, we have no circuit breaker now. But based on that student that we talked about at the last meeting, there was, it was a mix between tuition and choice, we now can apply for circuit breaker on that. And we can also ask for extraordinary relief. So that's around, it's around twelve thousand dollars. We put in ten to make sure that we get it. So there might be a little bit more there, so that's where the other ten thousand dollars came from there, so.
So it costs you, uh, costs risk, because if you do have people, like I said, spending increments up, down.
Yep.
You don't have the K buffer anymore, so you could be in a tough situation if you do have variants.
Correct. If you have three school, if you have three school choice students difference, I don't even say leave, difference between the exiting class and the class coming in.
Yeah.
You know, right now, it looks like it's gonna be okay, healthy wise, so, you know, it's not, but if it was a sudden change, you would, we would start off the school year in deficit and have to freeze an account or whatever, that kind of thing, you know, that kind of.
And we have had a few Sunderland residents in the past couple months move out and are still coming to Sunderland, so they, there will be a slight bump in school choice numbers from now to the end of the year. But we're not talking anything significant that would, you know, solve this issue.
And whether or not another school year they choose.
Correct.
Not to stop.
Right, that's, I mean, for all we know, that's, that's just for the eighteen, nineteen school year until June.
So that's why you have that buffer, and so you have a little bit. All right, so that's what, that got us to where, number without a toll number?
That got us to two sixty.
Yeah, a difference of two hundred sixty thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars, or a ten percent increase versus a thirteen point six.
Couple of questions. So, just to clarify first, this, the new one of two sixty-four fifty-six, does that include regular teacher salaries on being funded by school choice?
Part of one to the tune of forty thousand dollars.
Part of one?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one we just put back on.
Yeah.
Right. So the only other salaries on, coming from school choice on this fourth budget, I guess, would be part of one salary, but then IAs and sped IAs.
Right.
Two R's. I mean, so those are, for me, I'm almost, I can count them as, as additional to basic services. So one of the questions I would have going forward is if we did go for the, the entire three hundred fifty thousand dollars and go for an override, and Darius, who mentioned, like, to solve our financial problems going next year, and, and I think we've all talked about it. We, there's no crystal ball, but would that actually solve our financial problems if we request a three hundred fifty thousand dollar override and it passes?
Or well, a three hundred budget implies some level of override that we don't know yet.
Right. How, realistically, where could we find ourselves next year? I mean, that's one of the, whatever budget, I think the second question we have to ask ourselves, whatever budget we approve, is where are we gonna be next year? Because we have to give that warning, or that heads up. So, I mean, do, if, where would we be if we?
Here's my take, I, I, before we even had the remainder of the discussion at the last meeting, I just, for the heck of it, said, okay, so where do we stay with the budget now, it's before we put that teacher back into the local. Give or take four point five percent going forward to the following year. Here's the thing, if you go for an override, it adds to the tax base.
Right.
And that tax base moves you forward. You do this, it's one and done. So, it's putting really a Band-Aid on an open wound, in my professional opinion. You go for an override, you're at least trying to sew up the wound. It, it took you a long time to get to the place you're in in school choice, it's gonna take you a long time to dig yourselves out of that. There's no question about that. So, this is not gonna fix it, even if you go with an override, but it's gonna go a long way to helping you rebuild. Because really what's happening is your expenses are outstripping your revenues across the board, no matter what the funding source is. And, you know, you've got a president who has now hinted that federal entitlement grants are gonna be decreased by ten percent next year. So again, that takes a hit on your special education grant, your Title I grant, those kinds of things. So, you know, that's all of sort of the political surround over which we have no control. You know, and I've basically plugged into the budget, which is just our standard practice at TMS, is to level fund what the federal grants are, because you don't know at this point in time, and you won't know until the summer what they're going to be, and you hope that you get a little more. You know, we got a little more in special education this year, but it was because some districts either turned back the money or forfeited whatever, and then they redistributed, so, you know, we were able to get some more special education grants. But, it's, it's, you know, I mean, your reliance on funding sources that are volatile to the degree that you rely on them is a tough place to be, it really is.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it is what allowed us in, you know, significant part to, you know, have budget increases over a number of years that were like, you know, two, two point six, one point one three, point six three, one point six seven, one point six seven, two point four. Those are both, you know, below inflation, that's, you know, we know are the cost in, in the building, we're going up more. And, you know, we've had some bigger ones lately, but even if, going across the scope of time, it's, it's, uh, this is actually from a select board person, you know, a mean of two point eight and, you know, median to, just over two percent. So, uh, going back to FY oh seven. I, you know, what you said about the, it's gonna take a while to dig out, and to your point of, like, where are we gonna be next year, are we fixed problem? I mean, that was, my comment even in presenting that three fifty to the select board last year is trying to be really transparent. It's like, we moved away from the, like, cliff's edge to get to, in the ballpark of fifty thousand. But again, like, we, it, this, even that three hundred and fifty is not moving, like, you know, all the way away. Now, you know, again, crystal balls, who knows, you know, that we could have negative news on that, we could have positive news with the Promise Act and, you know, get some money in here that would move us away and not give us a cushion that we probably could, help us for years to come. You know, and, and so that, that three fifty felt like some, some compromise of, of, you know, how much, you know, the town, how much appetite the town would have in terms of the amount of an override in a second year in a row. And, and so I'd like to think it would, we'd have at least enough of a cushion to know, like, through next couple of years, and then go from there to see, you know, how things have evolved since then.
How much, if we go with this, the two sixty-four fifty-six, what would that leave in school choice starting next year?
It would leave ten thousand, four hundred six, twenty-six dollars and twelve cents.
And we would. Which could fluctuate in either direction.
Yeah. And we'd be spending two fifty, two sixty, uh, two, right, that, are we gonna expect to have that much in the, in the subsequent year, you know, that we would? Or are we gonna get? To Judy's point, you're putting a Band-Aid on an open wound, then that just puts off when you address the open wound. So you're just addressing it next year.
It gets bigger next year, because some of the way can't do it, yeah.
Well, we don't, I mean, when the override didn't pass after the two thousand eight collapse, right? We've been able, to your point, we've had less than inflation average growth in budget, even though the population of the, student population has continued to grow.
Yeah.
And some of the things that helped us to recover are not options. We have recovered over this period in between despite slow growth of our budget, partially through school choice, but we don't have the seats anymore. So if we end up in a situation like that again, we can't count on the grants or the, you know, to the political climate point, grants or school choice to help us dig back out of it even.
Right. Because it was, there were a couple of years after FY oh nine, this subsequent year, the federal grant that lasted a couple of years, helped, also helped us bridge that gap, reverse the school choice situation. There were a lot of positive things happening in school, and Maslow actually gave us a lot of school choice dollars that then helped us bridge it for several more years. And while we were, as we were also gradually spending into the current year as opposed to future.
So, I guess, you know, my other, my concern is that, so, it's really, I don't know how much it's going to, it's our decision, but we really have to be working in sync with the finance committee.
Yeah.
And with, and with the select board, because, so here's my concern, is that, we're right, right now, it's not built properly in the town, in the funding, where we heard from the select board at the last meeting, they said, your growth needs to be around eighty thousand dollars. According to how the town is currently set up financially with the, the growth that it's getting, that you need to be around eighty thousand dollars in growth. Well, you know, looking at, we have not been around eighty thousand dollars for the last three years. And I'm looking through the last three years, and you're talking about salary growth at seventy-six thousand, so you have four thousand dollars less to maintenance, fuel, textbooks, computers, so. You know, so that's, that's my concern in the, in the, you know, in the bigger picture, so I'm looking.
And it, all right, just to, to piggyback on all of this, it's not just that our student, overall student numbers have increased, the needs have as well. We're looking at close to fifty students next year receiving special education services, which is over twenty-one percent of our entire student body. Which is, which is high, which is high. The state average is around sixteen or seventeen for special ed numbers.
I mean, I know, any change, any birth change is unpleasant. But if you have kids in district and people choosing in, then when people are choosing to leave, yes, your bill goes back.
Exactly.
But it's not because you're paying extra money, it's because some of the offset that you are getting in is gone. So you're still better off overall, whether you decide not to have a program like Horizons and then have to send people out of district and you have a spike when they leave, or whether you have a program that brings people in and you have what appears to be a spike when they age out of the program, but actually they're just, you're just.
So you brought up a good point, I think Ben needs to make a clarification of what is, you know, someone was talking about the, the sunsetting of Horizons.
Yeah.
You know, Horizons being, you know, why don't you tell what the history of what, how Horizons began and where it's at now? Because it has sunsetted to a, to a degree.
Sure. Um, the Horizons program started about six years ago, when there was a cohort of students across the entire district, Sunderland included, that needed a substantially separate program. Rather than another elementary school in our district in Sunderland sending out of our district, we created the program here. Since that time, we've had two students throughout the past six years, two students moved into Sunderland who were part of that substantially separate program. So once again, that program supported students who moved in. Now, this original cohort is graduating this year. And although the sun has set on their graduation, we're still, now we're finding that the needs and the high needs are in our younger grades and significant needs. And so, in a way, we're looking to start recycle the program all over again. So as far as, and, and I'm not exactly sure what point the select member were trying to make the other night. If it were, when kid, with kids graduating, all of those expenses should go away. Well, aside from maybe a couple individual assistants that provide student support, those, those needs that are supported by the, that funding source, source is still there.
And I did tell, I did say that in the meeting when they asked about that.
Yeah.
That, exactly, that.
And so much so that, that, that cut didn't even make the pink sheet.
Right.
Which is our red sheet of cuts we didn't want to make, because that's how high the needs are for those kids just to access their regular core curriculum. So, so yes, we could have sunsetted that if we wanted to be clean in, in a business model, that person is fired, and then we hire another person to come in to do a job with the younger, with a different group of kids. We just internally started shifting that, and so, and I guess it's not as transparent. And usually you don't have to be as transparent unless you're in a situation like this, where you're shifting needs. If the needs of kids come up, you're shifting your resources in the building to meet those needs. And so I guess if they were thinking this as, you know, if you're on the outside looking in, you have a separate program, those kids leave, the less separate program should go away. Well, we've already started to use the resources of that program for other students in the building.
Yeah. And I don't know, had any other separate conversations with them, but I did say that in the meeting, at least in that moment, I felt like they heard it and digested it.
Okay. So.
And even if those needs are low now, those needs will always be recurring.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's a tremendous cost savings to have that housed in district.
Sure.
And the moment we sunset it, we'll need it again.
So, Ben, what is the cost of sending a student out that you can't have in-house for those kind of needs?
Uh, ranging from fifty to one hundred thousand plus.
So plus transportation? So, you know, although they probably are, they have specialized, but the longer transport, so probably it's a more expensive transportation. So, we talk about, we, we talk about that, I just kind of say that for, you know, people listening, that those are big numbers, and when you have these programs in-house, for a kid and a half, you can pay for a teacher. You know, and plus the teachers supporting other kids who may be, you know, who are able to keep in with their, in their community that, you know, may be borderline, that's important.
Right.
It's great to educate the kids in town, keep them close, but even if you didn't care about kids, you wish you could get stuck with a bill for Horizons, if you get stuck with a bill for sending kids out of district.
So I, I, I mean, so here's what I, basically, I've been thinking about coming forward. So the pink sheet is not one that I can see myself voting for. So this one for me is, the only way that I'm gonna come to this is if the town votes, if the people say that, through their vote, that this is what they want. So this for me is off the table. And I've gotten emails from several people supporting this three hundred fifty thousand dollar budget. I haven't received one email against this. I haven't received one email saying to spend less, nothing. What I'm faced with, looking at right now is, I think, and then correct me if I'm wrong, the decision we, we really need to be looking at is this three, pushing along this three hundred fifty thousand dollar budget, which will require an override, or going for, and, and this is where I'm uncomfortable, on the premise that this is gonna solve all our budget problems and we're not gonna have any problem next year. Or this two hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget, which I think that we can get through without an override, and I think makes substantial steps going in the direction we want, because it removes so many recurring expenses, teacher salaries off of school choice, leaves a little bit of one, but to me, that's like, this is step one. Step two, maybe next year, we move that over, or we see where we go from there. With the idea that we pass this, this is not solving all our financial problems, it's a, I think it's a significant Band-Aid. I call it like a, maybe a four by eight instead of like a one by two.
It's butterfly.
Right. It, it, and then, so we're gonna have to deal with it, but it, for me, it doesn't kick the can down the road. It begins with address it substantially, and the idea that it took a long time to get into this problem, it's gonna take us time to get out. So that's what I'm faced with, this three hundred fifty thousand dollar one that's gonna take an override, or the two hundred sixty thousand dollar one that we may be able to get through, but we have to deal with stuff next year. Am I sensing that right, and where do we go from there?
Yeah.
And the question, are, are both options on the table?
That's, the truth is, the larger option really isn't our choice, and we can, we can push hard. I mean, it is a choice for this board, it may not come through, may not come through fruition, be due to, that's really another, another board's choice to decide if that's the correct manner to take. So, I mean, the fact that that board sent it back and asked us to look at this option, you know.
Maybe not.
I think that, I think part of this board and, and central office and, and working with Ben and such is that we do have to look at, this is not a one and done, this is a several year problem. If this is the fix, definitely, we definitely know this is a several year problem. If we're gonna do the reduction, the additional reduction, and try to go through without an override. And so we're gonna have to look at, what does the budgeting look like? I mean, it's gonna be a less and longer discussion, which could be healthy too, we started earlier, you know, far earlier and that kind of thing. And we look at the overall, long-term, you know, how the, the town's going to address education and funding.
I mean, instead of just advocating, play it through both ways. So I was gonna say, right, if we, um, if we, I mean, I get the, the, um, that, that the override are not, you know, it's not fun to have another thing to, to go out and organize for and, and vote, you know, and, and another town election and things like that. But, but, you know, that law wasn't to say, like, you don't raise your taxes beyond two and a half percent. It was to say, if you do, there's an extra step that happens. You know, so I think there's this, this kind of like, um, this, that negative baggage on an override vote that is way beyond, you know, what it should be. Maybe that's, I mean, certainly that, partly that's just my bias.
Um, maybe that's, I mean, certainly that partly that's just my bias and it's like the law in the first place. But, but still, I mean, it's just that, it's a procedural thing. It's if you're going to do it, this is what you have to do. So now, what could be the other consequences of, you know, of, if it fails to pass, you know? You know, would the select, you know, then it goes back to, uh, you know, a cutting process? And would the, you know, would there be spite that would cause the cuts to be worse effectively? You know, or, or other, you know, other reasons of the, if you want to be more generous about the motivations, that would make the cuts more dramatic on the school than the, you know, this two sixty budget? I would hope not. Um, you know, so then the downside, um, would be, um, you know, so the potential downside is it doesn't pass, probably we're just back to the two sixty. It, the other thing is, it does pass, we didn't do enough and we're back here next year uh, having to make similar kinds of decisions about what we're either asking the town for or what we're willing to cut.
Or we ask for the override, doesn't pass, we bring this two hundred and sixty thousand dollar one forward and then have to ask for another override next year.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to go through this and really kind of flesh out the options. We either re-present the two fifty or we present the two sixty. If we present the two sixty, there's no guarantee that we won't still have to do an override. And then we'll be kicking ourselves that we are going to have to organize for an override that isn't even like going to address our needs. I'm not looking to antagonize the select board. They work very hard. I know there's no way that there's that much movement in the numbers happening on their side without them making tough choices and, and a lot of people doing a lot of hard work. But again, if you, if you have to have a get out the vote effort, it should be one that does something for what you need. And what I'm not clear on, and this is from talking with some of them, just if you put this much money on an override and you don't get the override, you don't necessarily, as I understand it, go back to the, the two sixty. It may be just whatever was part of the original budget that wasn't put to the override vote. Is that?
Once, if the override, you're saying if the override, if we went for it and it fails, then, then if, if assuming, which is the typical, like the, the town budget in, in town meeting passes, contingent on the override passing, the override fails, now that budget is no longer a valid budget. There's a special town meeting, um, you know, again, the select board would tell, make requests to us in terms of what they think, you know, that they'd want us to come in and pass another budget for that special town meeting. Uh, and then, and then a new, a new budget would be voted in that special town meeting.
I think it's, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong on this though, so correct me, but that has the wording of the warrant. So if the override is for the entire budget, then the entire budget is default. If it is just for the school, the elementary school, if this, this number is contingent on the override, then the school would be, and that's, and again, I'm throwing, I'm throwing irons at fire. If they have a different adjusted number, they may approach it very differently. They did say, if you're looking at that big number, it's going to say school on it.
Yeah.
And that's what they said. And I think that's why they were particular about saying that the school would be on it because it's not going to hold up the, they wanted to be clear that it's even going to hold the whole budget. And that's where I'm confused, was it to hold the whole budget or was it to be clear that this is the school's need, not the entire, not every department of the town?
That would be an important clarification.
It would be just the school because last year's override was a general town override. And the select board was very clear last week that if they worded this next one, it would be specifically for the school.
That's what I heard.
Yeah. I've been saying that, also I think some, you know, including from what, in the select board, it's been pointed out to them that, you know, if you look at this over time, this is not, again, this is not a school budget issue hitting the town. This is, the, the, the school is actually, the school choice has subsidized all town departments' growth over the last ten years. Not all, not, not every department, it's very department, but as a whole, the non-school part of the town budget has been partially subsidized by school choice money from this, from this, our budget, which has allowed us to keep down how much we've asked for. So, and, and, and I, and they're kind of reluctantly seeing that. I don't know, it would get them to change their mind in terms of how they present it. I don't know what, what the town thinks they'd be more likely to vote for than seeing it cast for the whole town or seeing it cast for the school. Again, I wish I had that crystal ball, but, but, but that's, but it's important to think about budgetarily and, and would that mean if it failed, that it all would have to come out of the school budget? That would be a critical element of the whole thing.
And it'd be on the pink sheet.
Um, because that hasn't been the case in the past. It was, came back and worked through in all, the whole town. I mean, I'd like to, you know, as we have been, I'd like to, you know, make the select board aware that, yes, we know, we have options, you know, depending on what we get. We still think that, you know, that, I, I still feel like that the, that budget, the three hundred and fifty increase um, is the, is the right one for the school and the town. If you tell us, you know, in the end, you don't, you're not going to go for an override or if an override fails, you know, we'll deal with what we have to deal with. But I don't, I mean, I, I have some concern, like you said, I have some concern in every, you know, present every time about how much margin it actually leaves us, how much cushion it really leaves us going forward. And, and I do have that worry about either way, I guess, about being, you know, back here next year. Um, but, and, and having somewhat of a similar discussion, but I, I feel like I know we're going to have the, I know we're going to be back here having the discussion if we, um, if we go with the two sixty budget.
For sure.
You know, and how much better is that if we didn't go for an override vote this year?
Is, um, have you got a feeling from the selectmen that just with two overrides back to back, uh, is that something they're not necessarily comfortable with? And would it be better to take a year off basically before pursuing the next one?
I don't think that, generally speaking, that two overrides back to back is a good idea anywhere. I don't, I just.
Doesn't go down.
It doesn't. And, and I think that one of the things that we do have to keep in mind, and I'm very cognizant of it, is those on fixed incomes, that we don't enter into this lightly. But last year's bud, but my worry about the override too is last year's override, that was a Band-Aid. Right? Because the conversations for last year's override, never once, anybody who was watching on TV or going to the, the select board meetings, they didn't have conversations about what the town actually needed. There were no conversations about what was actually needed to do this, this, this reset. We have one of the lowest tax rates in the area. Our teachers are paid amongst the lowest in the area. The conversation last year was, how much can we get through? How much can we get voted? And that's not what, what do we need to make this right? That, that is a literal Band-Aid. First, so for me, that, the, the override last year is, is coming on, it didn't even really do anything. However, there are those on fixed incomes that see two years in a row.
Yeah.
And they've just taken a hit this year. For me, I do think that, 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 that time is important. I mean, I would lean towards going, not depending upon the, the roll of dice on an override, passing this budget that I thought the, the, the select board kind of indicated towards us could get through with the idea that this is one step in a long process and, and not enter into the, we're going to be back here next year in trepidation, knowing that we're going to do this. This is part of the long-term plan in order to, to make things right. And then, I don't even know, maybe we might have to go to override next year, but maybe it's smaller. But for me, it's almost like, let's, let's get done what we can get done and not worry about, you know, what, what will happen at the ballot box. That's, I mean, that's where I'm leaning.
I definitely hear what you're saying about people on fixed incomes. And I think if anyone out there, I mean, knowing that this is going to be a ruling budget issue going forward and there are people who can be reached and who may choose to vote, or, you know, if, if you reach out to them, there's also people who always vote on these issues, some on one side, some on the other. And, and what I'll say is, if you have some energy to organize against an override, uh, don't forget to send a note to our friends in Boston because everyone in town pays either income tax or depending on the scale or sales tax. The state funds are spread more equitably over the population of the town than are just town funds. So, yeah, yeah. Definitely also room in the discussion for leaning on state sources of funding. Because I like options. We have a select board meeting in progress that we can catch. We can vote something here. They have, it sounds like Doug, uh, they plan to make some more definitive choices Monday. I know I have a hard conflict Monday evening, just in terms of public meeting law, availability of people that need to put out a notice. Is there an opportunity for a quorum of this group? If we had to do one more, I mean, we can agree on something here now. Whoever is available can go see what they have to say. And if it causes us to rethink whatever we decide now, then there's an opportunity still, if we want to reach for it, possibly to do something else prior to their Monday meeting. Does that sound?
And we have a school committee meeting scheduled for next Thursday, but that would be too late.
It would be too late for their Monday discussion.
Yeah.
Do, do they, I forget, do they, did, so do they have to put on, their numbers have to be what we pass? On that, what they put to the, to the, on the, on the.
No, they, they communicated that, you know, the school budget or any municipality budget can be changed up into town meeting.
Right.
They have to change town meeting floor.
Maybe somebody could vote to a man.
Right. I know you can do that. I just was wondering in terms, yeah. In terms of what, you know, I mean, I guess by Monday, they just, they have to decide whether or not they're going for an override. Um, they don't have to decide what budget, I don't know if they have to have the, what budget they're presenting at the town meeting. You're saying, it sounds like you're saying that can be changed right up until town meeting?
We could vote it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
We could vote something differently, could we?
It's entirely possible. As long as you get a quorum together.
So at this point.
And you wouldn't necessarily have to.
At this point, you have reduced the budget by ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So you are within six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars of where the selectman wants you to be. So you're not fully at a hundred, but you've come quite full close.
We've got ten K handkerchief.
Right. I mean, but you know, in realistic, with, with moving funds, we could reduce it by another ten thousand. You know, we could find something in there that, um, there's a lot of moving parts still that you're going to be able to find ten thousand. But I mean, we're running, we're running so close to the fence now that it's like, we've gotten rid of every kind of other buffer. But there is, you know, between, will chapter seventy come in differently? I hate to spend that money before we even have it, but it's going to be about ten thousand dollar difference at least. You know, there's some other kind of things that, you know, um, that might be out there that we can do, you know?
Yeah.
Chapter seven, but after seventy doesn't come into, as revenue for us, right? It's coming to the town.
Right. But it would give the town.
It would give the town that buffer, right, right.
Much more to put towards the causes, even with a, not quite there by six thousand, chapter seventy would take care of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But six thousand dollars.
Yeah, 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 I get it. I get it.
It's just, it's, it's important to, what's, my only, it's important for the general public to understand that this is already after another round of cuts. Yeah. So I just wanted to say it out loud. This is already three other instructional assistants. This is already putting food salaries onto the cost of lunch revolving accounting, which we haven't done in the past. This gets rid of five thousand dollars of custodial temp services from when we have issues with custodians being out. This is taking, um, a grant salary that we use for before childhood, reorganizing it, taking five thousand of Sunderland's share of it and putting it onto this. It is, um, taking thirteen thousand dollars of a retirement and putting it on a warrant. It's twenty thousand dollars of computer hardware. It's cutting a fourteen thousand dollar Spanish position. It's reducing OT from a full-time position to a point A position. And it's, uh, the art teacher and then the ones that are there, so. Sped transportation down by fifty-two hundred. That is a moving number, but we got it down this year. So those are all.
Freezing accounts this year.
The freezing of accounts this year, that's what we got.
Right. That's, that all happened before.
This before the hundred thousand today. I just want to say, because we don't list it all, it's like, they're just, they're not really straining there. It's like, so there's already going to be a reduction of some things that are happening.
It's an important reminder.
That's, um, you know, it's going to be a tight budget year already for.
And, and just pointing out that it's also completely unsustainable in the long run. You just need a correction coming over the next few years.
Because we've made shifts on our side of the ledger yesterday to offload the school choice deficit for FY nineteen, including the thirty thousand dollars that Ben has put on the table to help towards that end. So that was executed on our side. I sent the list over to the town accountant so that he can do the books on the town side. So that's happened as of today, but that's, you know, a hundred and fifty-some-odd thousand dollars will both impact either going on to a sped grant or being offloaded to, you know, revolving accounts, other revolving accounts within the school, you know, a summer REAP, or a summer, um, you know, Horizon's revolving account using the REAP grant to offset. So, I mean, we've done all of that, but we've hit up a whole bunch of other sources. So therefore, we deplete those sources, plus the thirty thousand dollars worth of cuts that Ben has offered up uh, in order to make school choice whole for this year. So it's happened on our side of the ledger. Um, like I said, I did send that over to the town accountant today so it can happen on the town side as well.
So it sounds like if we vote the three fifty, the school wears the override and it passes through town meeting and the ballot box or it doesn't. If we go for the lower number, um, where there's no guarantee that we won't still be looking for an override, although it might get you more goodwill from whoever, but you're still, yeah. And everything you just listed, again, which was not even before this round of cuts, I can't get behind the two sixty number without getting some kind of acknowledgement from, yeah, the town that, yeah, this is, is just to tide you over. That it's, it's not a sustainable budget and it's not.
Yeah, because not only does it not really fix the overall problem, but now you've decreased services. And to get those back and fix the problem, you're compounding things.
Exactly. And, and if we end up on the, uh, wrong side of that seesaw where we, where now we have three times more choice in than choice out. And if that starts to swing the other way, then it would really get slippery, which, when you start cutting programs.
So just for the sake of knowing what the numbers are, the budget, budget you voted the other, um, the other night at your last meeting that I was at with you, was two million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. So that was the budget you had voted. This budget, um, that we worked on with the ninety-three or close to ninety-four thousand dollars of cuts is two million, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
So it, it sounds like, it sounds like the committee wants to, it sounds like you want to vote the lower number, but have a conversation at the same time to make sure it's really understood.
I, I would say.
Because if they can make it happen, I know we're kicking the can down, instead of kicking it down, we're moving it carefully down and keeping an eye on it and we're going to try to build toward it. And they got to be with us, a partner on building toward it. I mean, they know that. We've had conversations with them. They know that this problem is not going to. We've had conversations with them, they know that this problem is not going to go away without, it's not going to go away. If you don't do the override scenarios, the problem's not going to go away.
Yeah.
You know, there may be new options next year, along with a different amount of an override. There may be, maybe the promise act comes through, I mean, there's some promises, you know, maybe the kind of thing, and we'll have a different set of numbers around our problem next year, but there's still going to be a problem.
And there's more time to organize and educate and have people understand.
Yep.
Potentially also.
So I would echo what Doug said, the two and a half percent thing has gotten into public consciousness that this is like the end-all, be-all of where budgeting process should happen. And all that is historically was just a number to make government more transparent. That if you're going to go above and beyond two and a half, the voters have to know. So there's nothing wrong with going over two and a half percent. That, the whole idea of keeping it below is illogical. What we're faced with now is, do we make an incremental approach, or we try to go all in? And the only worry that I have right now is that the town idea that if we go all in, then we won't have any issues anymore. And I don't know that I can sell that. So the incremental approach, I mean, it's, and it is dependent upon partnering with the select board and knowing that what we're going to have to do next year, but again, that's where I'm kind of leaning towards that. It's a long-term solution that we're going to have to take it. I like the first step of, for me, it's getting all those salaries. Been looking at for several years now, getting all those salaries off. And there's a huge movement in that direction, I think that's a good first start. And again, I feel like that we were kind of given that instruction by, by the select board. And then I applaud Bender's duty for bringing forth like, like the sixth or seventh budget as well. They've been very responsive and, and.
It's the beauty of a linked work.
Yeah.
It's a change, once it's built, the changes are easy.
Yeah.
Not emotionally speaking, but numerically speaking.
Difficult process, but I think we've been very responsive to the, to the board and the town as well.
Yeah, just to be transparent too. I don't love the idea of voting the two sixty tonight, because then there's, if you find out that you're still in an override situation, then going back to the three fifty is. It is tough, but.
Do we have the option if, if we bring forward the two sixty and then the board, the select board is going to have to decide what number? Do we have any ability to advocate for, you know, we're not bringing this number forward with the idea of an override if? If you're going to base an override on two.
I mean, this is not the, it's not the regional, it's not the regional contract. You're just a, you're a, you are, we are, a, a part of the town government. And so you could send both budgets forward and said, this is the one if you're going for an override that we recommend, and this is the one that if you're not going for an override to recommend. And therefore, you're very much, you're very transparent, it's very clear to people out there. If they try to do an alternate one to the override, it's like, you can come right back and say, that's not what we said. This is not going to fix the problem. If you think it's going to do this way, please explain how this works within the numbers we're providing it.
Yeah.
And, and, and it opens up that dialogue. I mean, I think that's, that's kind of where we're nervous about the other number is that what if they try to, what if there's an override done?
Right.
With that, that's not going to work. Or we don't see that working, let's be, let's just say that. If you're looking for two budgets, these are the two, these are the two options with it.
Certainly.
I don't know what could go, what could go wrong?
That's interesting, I didn't even really, I mean, that's kind of what I wanted to do, like one way or another, is in terms of the communication with, to the select board. I didn't think about mechanically that way.
I don't know of any law or regulation that, you know, someone calmly myself, it's not a live broadcast, it's not going to help. But the, but in a sense of Frontier has a, has an agreement that says they have to have a budget to the towns by a certain date.
Right. Yeah.
There's no, because that's because you're working with multiple municipalities. So this one is, I don't see why you can't say that.
Do they have to schedule an override by, is that what the Monday?
Yeah, yeah, to be on the, to be on the warrant. Uh, gee, so moved.
Okay.
I didn't even think of that as a possibility. But, so it would be essentially our contingent.
The only.
Budget.
The, the only other option that I'm thinking of is, you know, can you still have a buffer in, in school choice? Right, so something in between.
The two?
Yeah.
And how, how far would that get us?
So, I mean, here's, here's what I heard is ten K in school choice if we go with the lower number. Forty K in school choice.
Fifty.
Fifty for the higher number. So, yeah, there's a number anywhere between.
But we, we cut the school choice because we are at the brink of, it's either our programs.
Right.
And so, you know, I'd rather, I think I'd rather roll the dice on the school choice, knowing that the numbers are, from what we're seeing are healthy. If you have these reports that they're running, people are talking about, you know, going to different schools or that kind of stuff. And then that you also have a little bit of wiggle room with some of the different finances changing around us. You know, I mean, different sped increments and that kind of stuff, that we know is happening. These small thousand here, a thousand there, that could be helpful down the stretch. I mean, I think, I mean, the other option is if you're going to reduce the amount, if you're going to increase the amount of savings, then you got to increase the amount of cutting, Ben. And we can't even get to a hundred thousand because the next level of cuts goes into, goes into stuff that it's hard to get back. And I think also the next level of cuts also makes people consider, is this changing the program enough at my school? Where I should be looking at another school?
Right.
I don't think we've done that yet. I think we can still provide, we still can, it's going to cause, it's going to be more work for, from individuals. But if we can provide the same academic program that was provided this year, next year. You know? I think that's, you go into next level, right?
And it maintains the extra classroom to do.
Right.
Just to.
I mean, we don't have to, I mean, I was making the motion so we could then discuss a deeper or whatever.
You made a motion, I haven't heard a second.
What are we motioning?
To.
About two budgets.
So to, to pass a second, that would be a contingent on if the select board opts not to go for an override, then that would be, this would be our recommended budget under those circumstances. Or some, some, some such. I don't know. Just, it really kind of cleared, I mean, providing them the information that we, that, that that we're, we know what we would do essentially with our budget if that, if that, if we were.
If we were in an override situation.
Differently, yeah.
We would recommend the higher amount.
All right, so the motion would be to put forward the budget of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Oh, actually, it would be two million, eight hundred sixty-one thousand, two eighty-eight.
Right, that one.
Yeah.
Contingent upon no override, but if the town were to, if the board were to decide upon an override, we would go with the higher number.
Two nine five, yeah. Five six.
Basically, you're recommending they go with a higher number, it's going to be up to them.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know.
So that's the motion.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is second. Discussion. We're there a little bit already.
Huh?
We're there a little bit already.
Yeah, we are. Are there other comments of that that we're not considering?
I'm just trying to put myself in the position, and I know they're smart people, I know they're working hard.
Yeah.
And I know two overrides in a row won't go down easy. What I'm scared of is three. Right? We had one last year, we go for a small one this year, it's a town one, and it's not hung around the neck of the school, but the whole town, the select board and the school committee gather around and hold hands and say, this is what the town needs. And then the next year, we still have this structural issue to address.
Yeah, I, I don't think that we'll go with the town one. I think the select board was pretty clear that they were, if, if we do go to an override, they would make, they would craft the language that it is.
For the school.
For the school.
So regardless of which number we go forward, if we end up in an oversight right situation, it's on the school.
Right, and then one of the things that we did tell them that is that this is a, this is not financial mismanagement, it's not screwing anything, it's, this is an honest budget. This is what it really takes to fund the school in the way that the select board wants us to as well. Because the, the one thing that kept coming back to was, do not fund recurring expenses on variable revenues. And this budget is doing that.
And to Doug's, and the point earlier, because the town, the school has done that, it has enabled the town to spend less on the school, which has enabled them to grow other budgets, right?
More than they otherwise would.
Regardless of what they say at any meeting, the, the growth has been town growth. And the school has helped to stave off some of those costs through choice, which is coming to an end. Okay.
I also think that next year, I keep looking back, and that the, the school choice, I just got to make sure I got the numbers right. You know, originally, we were looking at three ninety, and it came to three thirty-four, and then it's down to two sixty-two. So there's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand odd gap that we're trying to recover from because of some miscalculations. We're not going to be looking at that again next year.
Right, that's true. So just so you know, I was digging up, I don't know, this isn't the final one, but when we were doing this last year, we had recommended uses of four eighty-one from school choice. This year, even with the, what did we get down to in the three fifty budget? It's two.
Two sixty-two.
With offloading, everything that we've offloaded, your total anticipated expenses for FY nineteen is three fifty-one, four oh eight, so you're still eclipsing. And with the extra fifty-seven-five taken out, your actual school choice revenue number for this year is going to be two hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars. So you got hit twice.
Right, I know.
This fiscal year.
But now, if we, you know, passing that, that three fifty four increase, the total coming out of school choice at that point was, what? The two sixty-eight minus the forty-seven or something, so around two twenty. Not, not with the budgeted that we had at, at four eighty-eight. So, but now, I mean, the revenue will, the revenue will be down too, but we won't have come from a place where a year ago, we were counting on so much more from that source.
So just to clarify. Keith, it's your understanding that if there is an override of any kind, the school is, it'll be for the school?
They were very clear at that.
Okay.
They were clear at this last meeting. Here, yeah, even here.
Yeah, and Doug, you're also clear that.
That it would be for the school?
No, no.
Oh, oh.
I was going to ask you the different question.
Okay.
The, yeah, that they're not necessarily talking about not having an override. If we can even get down to this two sixty number, we're still potentially looking at an override. He would propose the lower budget.
Yes. I don't know. I, that's the question, that's the million dollar question. I, there was the sense of, if we came in with that number, then they might be able to make it.
So it's not clear?
It's not, that's not.
My conversation, I had a conversation with Scott as well, and my, I left that conversation feeling that if I reduce the budget by a hundred thousand dollars, they may be able to get it through.
Then they think.
Without the override.
Okay.
That they were going to be able to work, they were going to still working on the numbers.
Yeah.
They may be able to come up with a way of doing that.
Right, right, that's certainly.
That's immediately what I reported on to other people, that this is why we're doing this.
Right.
Because we, you know, it is one avenue of going, that as we've discussed over and over, of different avenues, there's a.
And I think that's what they were trying to work through some more in, in the meeting today, or get maybe, you know, do that in a public way or whatever, but I think that was what they were working at, for sure, so.
So it sounds like we have a motion in a second to put forward a budget of two eight six one, two eighty-eight? Contingent on the select board not having an override. But should it be decided that an override is necessary, we would recommend two nine five six, nine four six.
Right, but just the budget you voted at the last meeting.
This is the budget we voted at the last meeting.
Nine four six?
So I, I agree with that, because I've looked at this, the three hundred fifty thousand in three parts. One is dealing with that one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar error. The second part is the negotiated salaries. And then the third part is trying to move everything off of school choice. And I looked at it, and one of the select board members had asked, you know, how did, how did we get here? And what do we do going forward? And my vision of this is, it's a, it's a, you know, crisis is opportunity moment. So we have that severe problem with a miscalculation in school choice that we have to recover from. That means that this is the time that we've been kicking it down the road to move everything off of school choice. That's why the, the number is so high.
Yeah.
So those are two parts, and the other part is the regular negotiated. I keep saying if that, if that miscalculation of school choice had not happened.
Be next year.
It'd be next year, but we'd still be sitting with the, with the teacher salaries and trying to move a little bit of money off of school choice, and be able to squeak it through, and we'd be right here again next year.
But it's, the miscalculated school choice is what, fifty-seven thousand?
Yeah.
Uh, no, there was an accounting error of that the December adjustment was not caught in mid FY eighteen. That was from going from three ninety down to three thirty-four.
Or three thirty-five.
Yeah, so there was a fifty-six thousand dollar miscalculation. And the three ninety was brought forward into FY nineteen, so that just sort of exacerbated the problem.
Basically doubled it up.
Right, so then it became.
But we paid for that this year.
Yeah, so we've now cleaned all of that up.
Right, but, but in terms of the.
We didn't have. Yeah, you didn't roll forward.
Yeah, so the, the deficit we were projecting, which was twenty-some-odd thousand dollars, we've managed to deal with everything to take care of all of that.
The addition of teachers as well, so that's another.
Yeah, so that, that's still in, they're, they're still in, still in both versions.
Yeah.
And the loss of the sped increments on people in the program. Call the question.
Okay. Okay.
Call the question after a second.
If all the questions, yeah, all in favor of moving the question, or in favor of moving the question? Remove the question, okay, question moved, all in favor of the vote? All right, pass your manuals. I don't think we have.
So the next one is the coordination, so that's the only thing on the agenda, but the only other quick thing is, is there a coordination? Is there another meeting? I don't know how you're going to pull this off.
If you have a joint one.
I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure. The town offices are closed on Friday, so I have to be able to get ahold of Sharon to be able to post it on the web. It's possible, we've done it before, but in order to do it forty-eight hours in time.
I don't know that, but again, I don't know that we have to, because I think we've, we've passed stuff in, I feel like, it's all foggy, but I feel like we've passed stuff in April after, you know, developments from, you know, from the select board.
Oh, like to adjust our final vote.
Yeah, if we, if we needed to. So we would have some, a little more wiggle room, and like, it doesn't have to be Monday, basically, or Tuesday, or.
I think we've built a backup plan in there.
And we've got a kind of backup plan in there.
All right.
So I think we, yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
I mean, I could post, I could try to post a meeting at the same time as the select board meeting at town hall. So if it's necessary for the school committee to get together, if this is anything wrong here, that they will have a meeting on the books in order to go into session to make a decision. I'm just reaching, because you always can cancel meetings, it's easy to cancel. And you're up, yeah, I mean, many of you are going to be at the meeting anyways.
If we were to call a meeting, that, that would be the route we would go, it would be Monday, we'd all be there, or.
I have a hard conflict Monday.
Yeah.
I'm coming from negotiations, but I'll be there with.
What time is this?
Are you going to be there, Amy?
Yeah, I'll be there.
So.
The time of the meeting on Monday, six thirty?
Yeah, I'll show you, I can call this.
I can be there.
All right, yeah, if you can pull that off, then great, if not, then we'll.
We'll be all there.
Yeah.
So I'm going to post it Monday at six thirty at town hall.
In an effort not to kill trees, I didn't give you the full on of this version. I will email it to you tomorrow.
Thank you so much. So much in adjournment, second, yeah.
Hey, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you for.